That should be visible to everybody right now. So yeah, with a little bit of a false start there on the recording side of things. We had this quiz time agenda item pulled up a bit early, but it was good. I liked it. Yeah, so welcome everybody. This is the 139th Ambassador Town Hall meeting. And today we are joined by quite a long list of people and I will mention all of you. We've got Roger Kaboty, we've got Bite Cardinal, we've got Cadano Class, Crandano, Eric S., Flyerfools, Haley, Ian, Judith, Jovan Kanichi, Mikasa, Muku, Pigets, Robert Werco, Slade, Solserus, and Sugar and Spice. Thanks a lot for joining everybody. That's always nice to see such a full house. We are not using cameras in order to have more people join in, otherwise it's kept at 25 if you're wondering. And yeah, for today, the agenda is as follows. You can see it on the screen share. So we do start off with the quiz time and after that, which is now, we'll go into the work groups update. After that, I do want to touch a little bit on tasks and have a check-in on the languages on translation side. After that, today we're joined by Dr. Robert Werco. Can talk a bit about True AGI and the coming plans on that project. And also we'll have Connor O'Higgins joining in. Let me quickly check if I missed his nickname. I think he's planning to join still. We'll see about that. Yeah, that covers most. After that, there's still space for open topics. Yeah, so let's dive right in. On the work groups side of things, first of all, we've got the Process Guild, which has its meeting right after the Town Hall at 19 UTC. Let's see if there's somebody around. Usually TiVo is very nicely positioned to providing an update on what we did. And the meeting of last week feels to me personally like it's two, three weeks ago already. It's not. Let's see, let me think on a recap of what we did. Perhaps anybody here in the audience, I think there were quite some people who joined that meeting as well, can give a little bit of a recap?
If you would like, we can move on to another one whilst someone checks up.
Yes, yeah, sure thing. I do want to call out on the Treasury Guild. There's a meeting on 15/13 UTC coming Thursday. And that brings us to the Marketing Workshop and Meeting. The workshop takes place on Mondays at 19 UTC and the work group meeting is at Fridays at 13 UTC. Well, Flyerfools, if I may, perhaps you can tell a little bit about the current situation and what we're doing?
Yeah, sure, for sure. So on Monday, this Monday, we had a marketing workshop. I'll just talk to you guys a little bit through the agenda which we went through. We went through the marketing, the sub-work groups, Marketing Videos and Writers Guild, which haven't found times yet to meet, but they're in process. So if any ambassadors are interested in joining Marketing Videos and Writers Guild, please join the subgroups on the Discord to arrange a time to meet. I think, yeah, perhaps one of those, I think Writers Guild is now almost set for a time, which Kanichi is doing a little poll on. So after that, we covered some DWork tasks, looked at the DWork task structure, and currently there's multiple people creating tasks, but there have been some problems in the production of tasks, some confusion. I've covered some problems, specific problems in the Marketing Guild today in some notes, which need to be resolved with the tasks already created. And I think they're great examples of our wisdom, which we can build in to the ongoing conversations about roles. We agreed there needs to be more onboarding onto DWork and education for people who are expected to be on that. It was highlighted that there are onboarding documents and videos for DWork, but this information isn't as accessible as it could be for the community. So there needs to be that giving of information, education. Content of Marketing Guild meetings these past weeks have kind of less focused on marketing specifically and the range of topics which we've found that need to be resolved for marketing to be functioning properly. So this is related to an update on a restructure of Marketing Guild, where we have a Strategy Guild and an Incubation Guild or Workshop. So these higher level goals will be covered by the Strategy Guild in the future and the lower level goals will be covered during the Incubation Guild or Workshop. Both of these will now happen on Wednesday. So until further notice, the Monday Marketing Workshop is being halted and that meeting is being moved to the Incubation Workshop. This is in light of the understanding that right now we need to focus less on productions of specific tasks and to focus that energy on the structural development of the program and incubating the ideas and proposals which come into the community from our great community, some great energy, great ideas, which often get lost. So me and Crandano, this actually comes out of a idea Crandano has been building for months now actually, about focusing more on incubation. And we really think now is the time to kind of implement that to enable the community members that are coming with ideas and proposals to help them manifest that into something. Currently, it's a lot of documents, sometimes they get lost. We need to aggregate information in the future. We covered a few more things, like the Pop Questions game as done in this session. And yes, I think that's about it. If anyone would like to jump in for something I covered, more than welcome. And perhaps Crandano wants to say some words also?
Yeah, I'll be at the Strategy Meeting tomorrow. Sounds like there's two good hours for us to discuss things like rules. I think that'll provide a lot more organization for us. I think something that we could really use is like a taskmaster right now. Whenever you have multiple different people setting up tasks and moving them around and stuff like that on DWork, it gets really confusing for everybody. It'd be nice to have somebody that kind of has a checklist to make sure that if a person wants to do a task or something, there's a nice checklist that they can go through.
Yeah, I think we should be able to get that arranged pretty shortly. And agreed, it would help. This was also during yesterday's session. At some point, we were trying to figure out how to get education on having everybody being able to create DWork tasks. And then afterward, stepping back one level, like hmm, maybe we don't need everybody to be able to make tasks, but just have people to be able to request tasks. And then one person or perhaps two persons for time zone coverage perhaps can actually execute on that.
Yeah, we also had a few ideas like that to be covered of yesterday, Monday, how to integrate tasks between a role-based and one-off task. An idea came out about the, say, a role-based manager of YouTube could be the reviewer and the manager of these subtasks, which are kind of distributed to the wider community.
Yeah, I hope we get some closure on that. Well, hopefully after tomorrow's sessions. Should be doable, I feel. Alright, yeah, thanks a lot. I think that covers quite well. So yeah, as mentioned, looking at the slide for the Strategy Guild and the Incubation Workshop, these do take place on Wednesday 19 UTC. And then, yeah, also for, let me get the order correct. I think the incubation is, yeah, we started with the incubation meeting, so on a more practical level, and then have the Strategy Guild meeting on a somewhat higher level. Yeah, then I do want to remind that there's a public calendar available, which you can add to your calendar, so you never skip a meeting. And I do feel we might get back to this topic of structure and where we're at and what's needed, perhaps to the latter end of this meeting? Unless somebody has something to add there right now?
I just want to clarify that from going forward, there's no Marketing Workshop on Monday and the Incubation Workshop will start next week on Wednesday at 19 UTC.
I see. Based this on the public calendar, so that needs a little editing then. So then tomorrow's Strategy Guild session will be a two-hour session. Apparently. Is that correct? Or is it just one hour and we see if it goes over, then it goes over?
It's on, Strategy Guild is on 8:00 PM on the, like, 20 UTC on the calendar. I think it's just an hour, but like most of the meetings, I'm sure are run over.
Yeah, it's my bad. I said two hours tomorrow, so that's kind of confusing. Yeah, it's just that, yeah, one hour.
Okay, cool. Alright, then moving on with the slides, because there's quite some. I quickly wanted to touch on the, on task side of things, primarily focused on translations. I'll add a task for the Rejuve Token Utility block to be, well, added onto DWork. You'll see that popping up. And yeah, last week, we didn't fully discuss the topic, but there are some suggestions for adding additional languages for translation. And yeah, I added like the seven most, yeah, it's mixed. The input for this is mixed on, for example, YouTube Analytics, let's say, Social Media Analytics, and also local groups on Telegram. And it does seem like these seven languages would be all decently, well, would make sense to also support on translation side of things. I'm not sure if right now would be the best time and place to fully discuss if it should be exactly these seven languages or I think it's better to take this to Discord if people have other ideas about languages or potentially other languages to add or saying, well, completely makes no sense including one of this list, stuff like that. Might be best to have that on Discord and... Yeah, well, I'll make a post about that, suggesting these seven to be added. And if in a week from now, there's no big arguments against it or for adapting it, then that's going to be it. Any thoughts on that?
Just a small thing. TiVo reached out to me. I think Ian also knows about this, but there will be some conversation about education of translators and all these things. So I don't know the details, so I don't think TiVo is here, but I guess you can get more details from TiVo from, you know, if you're right on the chat somewhere. But yeah, that will be something to be discussed later on.
Alright, yeah, sure thing. Cool, then on to the next slide. I think Connor is not yet in the house. Doesn't look like it, no. And basically from, from Mindplex Magazine side of things, they're looking for additional community contributions. So this is, well, clearly a one-on-one fit for the Writers Guild, I imagine. And well, Mindplex itself, it's live for about a month now, I would estimate. Yeah, it's a futuristic magazine in the broadest sense of the world. There's a whole range of topics which can be covered. So far, I think within the Writers Guild, the focus, or the conversations at least, it's still in the process of shaping up. But so far, the conversations were mostly about covering Singularity Net site of things, like the ecosystem projects and writing blog posts really about that. Mindplex is way broader. It's like, yeah, basically, any futuristic content is very welcome there. So if you're interested in, yeah, writing articles and having them published on Mindplex, hit me up. And I do see in chat a question by Flyerfools, is anyone leading the Translation Guild? Practically speaking, I make, I do the DWork side of things. So when there's a blog post, I'm, yeah, I turn it into, into the tasks. And TiVo is active on onboarding and having conversations with new people who will apply for the onboarding task on DWork?
The content comes from the Foundation directly, like he says, "Oh, we need a translation."
Yeah, pretty much. So far, it's only been translated from blog.singularity.net.io. Yeah, initially, we were making a bit of a selection, or I guess that was pretty centralized in me making that selection, figuring out like, what, these are the more important blog posts to translate? But it seems like with the current amount of people who are interested in translating, we could easily scale this up into, I think, pretty much every blog post translated. So that selection will shift into basically covering everything?
I have a question about translation. I don't want to like rain on anyone's parade, but with the current standards of ChatGPT 3 and ChatGPT 4 coming out, is it a question that can be, should be considered in the future of like, when there are like programs or like, for instance, AI services which we can use for, for instance, translation? Do you think there should be onboarding of those tools into the workflow? I'm curious.
Well, initially, we had discussions on this, as it became clear that some people were, you know, on translation side, Google Translate doesn't change that much or isn't that much different from ChatGPT. Yeah, we had a lot of discussions on whether or not they should be allowed. And the result of that was pretty much like, well, if it is, if, quality should matter. So like if people choose to use a tool to have like an initial translation and then go over it and make, have it make sense, because sometimes the translation really doesn't make sense. So if people use the tool and then the output is high quality, then basically that's fine. So we're not actively blocking people saying like, "Ah, you used Google Translate." Like if it's just Google Translate, it becomes clear very quickly that it's low-quality translation and that does get called out. And as Ian puts out, points out in chat, community feedback on the translations is important there. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's good information. Nice. Thanks.
I think just on that, like, I agree with Fly and I think Peter explained it very nicely. I mean, most of people doing translation now, especially non-professional translation, I think, you know, like these tools like ChatGPT, Google Translate, or whatever are a great starting point. I personally use them in my translations. Your job becomes then not exactly translating word to word, but making that whole translation coherent and make it make sense basically. Because most of the time, actually not most, all the times, there is something, some couple of sentences that just don't make sense if you translate them word to word. And you have to do a lot of editing. And that's, I think that's basically the main job of people who are taking these translation jobs, including myself.
That's nice. I thought they were used, I kind of imagined, but it's nice to, it's nice to hear that it's kind of like integrated into the workflow in this open way. That's cool.
Yeah, it's not mandatory. Let's put it like that. There's also people, the Art Translator is doing it all manual. That's also perfectly fine, as long as the quality is there. Alright, then done for the next slide. Why isn't my slide working?
Peter, just to add a little more detail on the translation side, I was thinking if we could incorporate peer-to-peer editing. That might be a good idea to have like a pre kind of processing of the translation and like having some couple of suggestions before it goes to the public. I think taking it directly to the public might affect, I don't know, perception of the quality of the work that maybe the ambassador program is doing. So having like this first step of peer-to-peer kind of, let's say, I don't want to say editing, but just like suggesting, that would be very nice to incorporate.
Just a note on this translation thing. It's quite nice that there's, there's an article that comes, say, from the Foundation and then is kind of put into, put into the Ambassador Program workflow. And I think like when marketing starts up again, that can be a really nice thing to try and get these leads from outside, from above, from the Foundation and other sources to create with, with our strategy to develop. Nice.
Yeah, and as Eric puts out, so making sure to capture the content and make sure the presentation is of quality. I think pretty much everybody is online there, inline. I'm not sure why my, on my side, it doesn't show my screen share properly. Let me try to fix that.
It's working now.
Alright, yeah, cool. Yeah, this. We don't have enough time for now to dive into the discussion about the program structure. And but I do want to point out that this, in the Marketing Guild, you can find multiple documents. One about the roles that are currently being ideated on, yeah, the leadership and work group type of roles. And also for, I think that would then become next week's session of the Strategy Guild for the 10K feed overview on rewards. I think Hataf posted a document on that earlier today. It's definitely worth checking out. And if you have thoughts, ideas about these, don't hesitate to join the discussion. Ah, yes, I do want to make a quick call-out for the Community Round, the Rejuve Token Generation event. That's still open today, but it will also close today, end of day, so 23:59 UTC. That's the latest moment you can still participate. And yeah, then tomorrow, there will be a First Come, First Served round, which starts at 12 UTC. For both of these, you do have to have your tokens staked and you do have to have KYC yourself. But I just wanted to, yeah, to call that out. Oh, and as Pigets indeed in chat mentions, yeah, this is unfortunately not for US citizens. But yeah, not by our choice per se, but that's just, yeah, legal.
I have a quick question. So I have my AGIX and my ESTO staked and I applied for the KYC and I'm in the allocation pool. And then the next step is that you have to buy Tether and put Tether in to buy the tokens. Is that what you have to do?
Yes, yeah, contributions initially they were in USDC, but over the weekend, as you might have noticed, there was quite some trouble surrounding USDC. So the change, so the decision was made to change to USDT for contributions. Alright, let's see. Yeah, that does bring me to the end of today's Town Hall meeting. I think we can, if there are open questions or, yeah, other ideas that people do want to share right now, there's still a couple of minutes of time for that, but I am trying to not run over by too much. So if you have questions, feel free to ask.
Do you think it's possible to implement like a voting into Town Halls in the future? And should we look at setting that up for next one?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, if you scroll up a little bit, I tried this. Like the easiest way of, it's not a real vote, but you can react to a message with a mnemonic on. So you can have like, on the question of, I put in the chat, like, "Do you know about OpenCV?" And then because I asked the question, I put a green checkmark and a red, well, negative, like one positive, one negative. And so in that way, you can do like a quick temperature check. But it kind of depends on how complicated the topic is and what the options would be for this specific vote, I guess.
Sorry, I don't know if anybody was talking, sorry to intercede, to interrupt, sorry. Regarding the community onboarding, the documents I and Sukran were working on, there has been, there have been replies on the onboarding form, like there have been thrown up on the onboarding form and this reply actually needs someone to attend to them. So I was actually going to propose maybe getting a role as a community onboarding, onboarder, I don't know, something like that, where I should be able to attend to this set of people that are ready to be ambassadors, something like that. So I don't know, I can't have the role of ambassador translator and be onboarding. So I think a role should be given at this point, where I should be responsible for onboarding myself and Sukran Spice.
Well, I think in the, yeah, on the onboarding side of things, I think so far in all the roles discussions, this was definitely one of the roles to be included, absolutely. And I'm not sure if I follow what you were saying about not being able to be both a translator and an onboarder, because in my not being able to be both a translator and an onboarder, because in my mind, this wouldn't be mutually exclusive, but maybe a misunderstanding.
Al- all right, if I can use my current role to onboard, then I will, I will proceed.
I mean, yeah, but I, I think that's, um, so on a some odd level, I think after establishing the roles, there would, there would should be a process for picking out who's gonna do which role and yeah, I, I think it would be pretty open, like, anybody would be able to apply, I, I'm not the biggest fan of having like, um, already, uh, a lock-in on who's gonna do the role, but maybe that's not the right way of approaching it.
Um, uh, I don't know who's talking before, I think it's Mikasa or someone else, but Lu, what do you mean exactly by onboarding?
Um, because in the last meeting, I think we talked about, um, bringing in new ambassadors, and these ambassadors also go through a, a process where they are deemed fit to be ambassadors, right? So one of the roles, at least someone in the Ambassadors Guild should be able to onboard this set of people and yeah, that's the onboarding I'm talking about.
Yeah, uh, the, the only problem with that, Mayor, is that, um, for example, I myself am not, I don't feel onboarded yet. Like, most of us are not onboarded yet, especially because the roles are not, uh, well-defined and the process is still not well-defined, so I think onboarding before defining the process is not really, uh, something to, to do, because most of us here are not onboarded.
Yeah, I think this is gonna be like a big focus on strategy tomorrow, so I'd, I'd say definitely attend that meeting tomorrow and bring your viewpoints as well. Um, because that's kind of a, a big, big part that we're at with the Ambassador Program right now, it seems we need to take a step back. You know, we, we do have people that wanna onboard, write, do videos, lead workshops, and we really need to find a way to get roles to people so people have an understanding of how many hours a week or month that they can be rewarded since we do have a certain budget and, you know, on, onboarding more and more people at this point, we're kind of working backwards in a way when we really need to start from the beginning and lay out the foundation and build from there, and I think that'll be a big part of strategy tomorrow.
Amen to that. Nice.
All right, um, yeah, let's, let's not, uh, uh, start that discussion then, uh, right now, because I, I don't know, I feel inclined to, you know, break open the whole topic and then dive into it for the coming, whatever hour long, but, um, at the same time, uh, I, I did actually see TiVo join, um. We are running into, again, uh, Process Guild, uh, time, um. Hmm, yeah, so I, I think it makes more sense to have that discussion, uh, committed to, yeah, tomorrow evening instead of right now. All right, um, anything else we should touch on before, um, closing this session and, and hopping to the Process Guild for those interested? There's some chat going on about wallets and suggestions.
Yeah, just tomorrow to confirm the first half of the hour is nineteen hundred UTC, if I read my notes correctly, and that's the ground level view. And then we're gonna go to, uh, ten thousand up in the air, uh, and the, at twenty UTC, we're going to do, uh, the ten thousand foot view. If that's, uh, according to the notes from last week, is, is, does that sound correct to everybody?
Uh, just to jump in there, on Monday, uh, that was the last, um, workshop, but that's the workshop for this week. So I'm not available during, uh, nineteen UTC on Wednesday, um, but if someone else, perhaps Crandano, would like to run, uh, that lower foot view from nineteen UTC to kind of set the foundation to go on to the higher, higher level strategy, that's great. I, I can't, um, make it there. Crandano, perhaps you could be interested, or someone else?
What do you guys think? Should we do, try to do two hours tomorrow? Because I, I can make it for tomorrow.
Yeah, one, one hour is the ground level view, uh, Crandano, if you wanna host that in lieu of Fly, and then, uh, we're gonna go up and if you saw the budget that I threw out there, we're gonna look at a very high-level view so we can really step backwards and um, figure out how to come out of the gate from ten thousand feet, so it's, it's about two hours if everybody can join us, but two separate agendas.
Nice, so that's nineteen UTC to twenty-one UTC. Great.
Cool, that works for me.
I, I'm just wondering, like, does this, uh, order of, of the two things make sense, like, and in my mind, it would also, I, I could see arguing doing it the other way around.
Yeah, I get, I get, I get, uh, your point there. I, I would say, yeah, tomorrow is almost like, it's, in a way, it's all gonna be crushed into one to a certain extent, because we kind of need to get our ideas out there to an extent, and you know, they, they both kind of rely on each other when it comes to like, a budget that you're working on, Dead Elf, and of the ideas of roles that you and Flyufools have currently, but I feel like it's all gonna be kind of a mixed together conversation a bit, um. I'm, I'm not really sure the best way to do that, whether we wanna do like one whole session and we think it could last for two hours, or if we should just make it into one session. I, I do feel like it'll probably go over an hour of people talking either way.
I think in terms of the higher level view, I, I do see that there's all this information from the tasks on the ground which can be fed into, uh, the higher level view and how to do that, I, but I totally agree, they don't, they don't look separately to each other and they're kind of intertwined on some level.
Yeah, especially the first meeting on this topic, I think it's gonna be kind of, yeah, a little bit of a mismatch, a mishmash of like a little bit of everything between, uh, the two different meetings.
All right, so basically for anybody who's available, um, suggestion would be to join at nineteen UTC then. And this, let me reflect this in the uh, in the shared calendar. I'll just make it to two hours slot then.
Are you able to attend both, Headelf?
Yeah, we set that aside, uh, and I set it aside, um, last week when we, um, started discussing this and it came out of that impromptu meeting that we, uh, several of us were in.
Okay, cool.
And it may be a mishmash, but it, it seems like a lot of these meetings are, so we're trying to just pull back a little bit and accomplish, uh, one item and, and then move on from that.
Yeah, nice. And I, I don't think it's like a negative thing or anything like that, that they'll be kind of intertwined or anything. Just to make sure to let people know, like, it's all gonna be kind of one meeting to an extent, at least the first one, if people are looking to make it and you're able to make it to both meetings.
All right, clear. Uh, I do think, um, unless I'm missing something, I think we're ready to wrap for now? Final check, anybody wants to contribute something?
Oh, yeah, just one final, the final thing, so our winner for today's quiz is actually SolTheirs. So, yeah, congratulations, and, uh, hopefully, uh, I, I don't know this yet, I talked to Fly about it, but I am thinking to, uh, attribute something like two, three, five AGIX for every participant, and then ten or twenty for the winner, nothing much, but just to make everyone happy and, uh, uh, show you how much we appreciate that you participated and you had some fun.
Yeah, perfect, sounds good to me.
Nice.
All right.
A little call out for everyone also to, uh, the ones to join the Process Guild, um, everyone from here is more than welcome.
Yep, the, the Zoom link is in chat and also in the Process Guild channel, so that concludes, uh, the town hall for today. Thanks, everybody, for joining and, yeah, hope to see you, um, either in the Process Guild or tomorrow, um, or in, and, yeah, basically any of the many meetings where, so, thanks a lot.